I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. If we will here, if we will, let's please, I'm gonna ask Mr. Allen Wiggins, Judge Allen Wiggins to do the prayer.
Thank you. If you would join me. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather as your people. We thank you for the opportunity to participate in government that we know is dedicated to your service. God give these leaders, if they go through this meeting, give them wisdom and give us patience sometimes. In your name we pray. Amen.
And while we're standing, let's do a pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Becky Denny. That brings us down to item number three under the amendments to the agenda. We have, we have four amendments to the agenda. Item A is item D, to transfer property on Cove Road from Pickens County to the city of Jasper. B, online water bill payments. C, Water Board Authority proposed water rate increase. And D, I just got notified today that the University of Tennessee along with the Georgia DNR would like to do a survey or a study up at our water tank site on, off of Churchyard Road where our meeting got on water tank. And I'll explain that to you. Those are three items I'd like to bring extra as amendment to the agenda. May I get an approval to those four items?
Turn them over.
Have a move and a second. Any further discussion? None being, all that favor number saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed? Thank you. That brings us down to item number four, under the approval of the agenda, with those extra four items up there. May I get a move and a second to approve the agenda?
Turn them over.
Second.
Have a move and a second to approve the agenda. It had written at this time, all that favor number saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed? Thank you. Now, at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Becky Denny for employee recognition. This is part of the, part of the evening that she has got started and it's been very, very well received. Thank you very much, Becky. And her look to you.
My favorite part of the meeting. And this is a big one. Tonight, we have a 20-year employee and we have many long-term employees in the county and personally, I'm very proud of them. So this one goes to Mr. Jerry D. Walker, Jerky, for 20 years.
Thank you.
Way to go. I have to remember that.
They'll all chip in, get some Mountain Dew when this is over. I don't know. He had my haircut.
Thank you, monsieur. For getting sent up on the.
Just real quick, I have known Jerky ever since I was probably this tall. And, you know, you recognize him tonight, 20 years' service, but he's actually had over 40 years of service in public safety here in Pickens County. He started out with the fire department many, many years ago and then, probably many, many, many years ago. And then, from there, went to work for the sheriff's office, actually left sheriff's office for a short period of time, went over to Jasper Police Department and then back to the sheriff's office. While we've got a lot of the young guys coming in and bringing, you know, new technology and new ways of doing things, I for one, just want to thank Jerky for his service, not only to the county and to our citizens, but for what he's done for me over the last nine years since I've been sheriff. He, he's got a way of talking to people, finding people and doing things that most of these young guys, they don't have a clue about. And so he brings a lot to our office and I'm very thankful for his service.
Allen?
Come on.
You've been up here.
I've got a few Jerky stories if you'd like.
What's that about?
We gotta keep it short here, guy.
But if Mary and the other ladies here were getting with us after maybe.
We've got some.
Now, I think we've got, we'll bring it straight. Now, at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Fay Harvey, the chief financial officer of Pickens County. This is the financial report, item number six.
Okay, thank you. The report that I have is for the period ending April 30th, and that is four months of our fiscal year, so the expenditures should be 33.3% or less. The, the total revenues collected through April 30th is $4,581,113, and that's 17.97%. The total judicial expenditures are $1,47,483, and that's 28.99%. For public safety, expenditures were $3,919,569, and that is 30.45%. Okay, and then we go to public works. Those expenditures are $1,181,280, that's 37.61%. That is a little bit over the allowable, the allowable budget, but for the road department, that includes most of the construction of that, of the bridge replacement, price creek bridge replacement. And that's a one-time expenditure, so that budget should level out as the year goes on. For the health department senior center and MATS program, expenditures were $210,872, and then that's 26.52%. Culture and recreation, $265,848, and that is 28.55%. For housing and development, $174,557, and that's 28.40%. So the total general fund expenditures are $7,710,973, and that's 30.24. So we're under budget of a little over 3%. For the enterprise funds, the water department, expenditures are $491,584, and that's 22.9%. For the airport, they were $112,111, and that's 28% of their budget.
Any questions?
Any questions about that?
Uh huh.
Okay.
Yeah.
Like I was explaining, the larger report that you have is, contains the, basically the audited figures from beyond the budgets from 2016. And I did include the line item budgets, that's why there were so many, the line item budgets are behind the other reports. We will have an audit presentation on, at the work session on June 1st, at the 10:00 AM work session. The auditors will be here to present the audit. And their suggestion is to amend or adjust, adjust the general fund budgets so that we recognize the revenue. We did have almost 4% more revenue than we budgeted and we had, we were under budget in expenditures. So if y'all will look through this and if you have any questions, let me know. We will need to do a budget amendment before the audit goes to the state on June 30th. And we can do that in the June 15th meeting, that would give you time to look over.
Okay.
Yes. The next four meetings, I believe it's June 15th.
June 15th, yes. I don't know if we need to have a special work session on that and go ahead and get this cleared up, because it's late till June 15th. June 15th, the work.
I think we can do June 15th. They, they won't, I don't think they'll send the budget, the auditing into the state until after that's done. So go back to your time. Okay? And if you have any questions, you may talk.
Give us some reading, Ms. Wiggins. Any questions on that? Ms. Fay, thanks very much. All right, that brings us down to item number seven, under consent agenda. Under the consent agenda, we signed a National School Nurse Day proclamation. That was May 10th, 2017, and these are on our website. Item B of that, we signed a Foster Parent Appreciation Month proclamation, and that is also on our website. Now, that brings us down to item number eight, under old business. Under A, amending Chapter 58, the solid waste of Dakota ordinances of Pickens County, Georgia. That's in regard to, y'all voted the table, table, the issue on the structure or non-structure of what we want to do, what the county wants to do around the waste receptacles. You've got, we as a board have got three, three options, in my opinion. If y'all got something else, let me know. One option is not do nothing. The second option would be to pass it as it is written. Or the third item would be to pass it and have the county attorney change it to the fact that it's not retroactive. Or, or we can just hold it, you know, like we did on the first time. Those three items is what, what I'm looking at and then know which route you, y'all wanted to go with that.
Richard, did you look at any funds or anything, you know, if it was signed in compliance, if someone was signing compliance?
I did, and we've also received input from citizens. And there've been three different groupings of statements, you might say. One statement from multiple citizens has been, "It would be an unfair, unreasonable burden to require new enclosures to be constructed around existing dumpsters of existing businesses." Another group of citizens has said, "The text amendment was not even needed." Another group of citizens has said, "They're in favor of the text amendment for new and existing businesses." But if the amendment covered all existing businesses, there should be a reasonable timeframe for compliance. Six months is a possibility. And if an existing business did not come into compliance within six months, the violation after notice and due process would be $1,000 potentially.
$1,000, where'd the $1,000 come from?
That was a suggestion of a couple of citizens. And, you know, give them another six months. If the $1,000 fine was paid, but still not come into compliance, and then after that one-year period, then it would be a further $1,000 penalty and, you know, taking it to court potentially.
Have you heard more from any one group than the other? The calls I have received have been kind of 50/50 almost, wanting something, wanting this past and, and being fine with things the way they are. Have you, do you have a larger number responding to any one of those suggestions?
Yes, ma'am. I mean, in general, although it's been multiple citizens, it's not like it's 50 people here, 50 people there, 50 people there. It's more like a few people here, a few people there, a few people here. And the response has been, very few people have said, "No change is needed whatsoever." Very few people have said, "A change is needed and it should apply to everybody." And then several people have mentioned to me that, yes, it may be appropriate to have a change, but if it's a new change, something's different, that it might be most appropriate, excuse me, appropriate for new developments only.
Jury, you got any questions on that? I need a motion to see which route that y'all would like to go.
I'll make a motion if we put this into effect, but without any.
Retroactive.
Retroactive.
Okay, I have a move. Okay, I have a move to make this ordinance effective, but without any retroactive. Ms. Becky?
I think I would favor just voting for and making it retroactive.
You want to make it retroactive? So we've got a vote for retroactive and vote against retroactive. I got a vote on the floor, I'm sorry. Either, either or. So jury has made the motion to, he would like to vote for the ordinance change, but not make it retroactive. So I need a second for that one first, that's what you're saying. I need a second for that motion first. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna second jury's motion. I'm gonna second jury's motion. So we've got a move and a second, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna second jury's motion that from this point on.
Pardon?
Yeah, that's correct. Any, now we got a move and a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, you have, can I ask you a question about it? How are we going to respond to businesses that are sold? If a new person obtains a business license, would they be at that point required to comply even if it was an old structure?
I would say, however, the triggering mechanism is, is the.
Construction.
Is the construction.
All right. Got a move and a second to vote to make the change in the ordinance without making it retroactive. All that favor number saying aye? Any votes? None being, aye's passed.
Was it three or two?
Two, two over. She didn't vote? You didn't vote? Some of you voted against.
Right, yeah. I was for passing it and making it.
Make it retroactive.
So then it's, you voted against it. I would always.
Correct.
He's got a second vote.
Now, Allen, can I talk? Now, to Allen's point, the, if, if the item, if the building, a building was to sell or you were to take over in the future, could this be amended to make, make that one, or we need to pass an ordinance altogether?
Again, you've got, you've got two ways of regulating this. One is through your police department and regulations. The other is, as a property, you cannot make it retroactive based on property. Once they, once they have been granted a permanent account to build according to certain, whatever guidelines are at that time.
That's right.
That's right. You can't touch it. And the vote which I've just taken would only apply to things, through structures over built, from 184.
That's right. You can't, okay. I just want to clarify.
That's not a figure.
Can I ask a question? Pardon? Can I ask a question?
No. Not, not to. All right.
A little bit of discussion.
Yeah, the public debate that came to the chamber. All right, that brings us down to, under new business, item nine. We have item nine, new business, possible funding for an A4 view. An A4 view. Jury, Nick Vitale, I'm gonna let you or Becky speak to that.
I'll be glad to. Thanks for the opportunity. What I wanted you to, to consider is, you know, prior to the launch of the update of the comprehensive plan, many citizens were coming, really approaching the Chamber of Commerce, and they were interested in looking at the forward view, which was a study that was done back in the 90s, I believe. It was a comprehensive visioning plan that was facilitated through the Vincent Group at the University of Georgia. It had addressed a wide range of issues within our community, ranging from healthcare to services to planning. And at that time, the comprehensive plan was structured differently than it is today, even if it was in place. I don't remember if we speak. But so people were coming together and they were wanting to do that for the county. They wanted an updated version. And so what, you know, since that time, the update of the comprehensive plan has taken place and we are working very closely with the county, with Richard, to make sure that the community is aware of that process and has input into it. But the difference between a quote, new forward view and a comprehensive plan is probably the scope of the, of the visioning as well as the depth of it. And so I think that this plan could be an asset as it would supplement certain areas of the comprehensive plan, the attempt would be, compete with it or to try to take its place. But again, I think it would, I think it would bolster it because of the depth and the areas of focus that could be done through the forward view. As some of you may recall, we did a, a plan through the city. We actually used some, some lost dollars because a large part of the focus was on transportation, but there were some other elements in there. And that's being used right now as a guideline. So if you go downtown and look at some of the planting that's been done downtown, that was as a result of that study. So there's a lot of things, I think, that will benefit the community as we work towards trying to enhance our community and I, and I think really try to make it more inviting to people so they'll come up, they'll pay the money, support our businesses. And, and so again, what I'd like y'all to consider is, is, you know, possibly funding this, you know, it could be structured similar to how we did it with the city. It could be facilitated through the Chamber of Commerce so that it's not a burden on county resources, but certainly we can do it however you think best. The estimate on having somebody facilitate that process is about $11,500. So it is a significant amount of money, but again, I do believe that it could be of value to us as we plan for the future. And, you know, again, the timing, when you look at it, when this effort and the desire to do this started, the update to the comprehensive plan really hadn't taken place, hadn't been advertised yet. So I could see where some people might see this as, as a conflict or redundant, but again, when you get to the specifics, I think this is something that would provide some great detail and help us better plan and, and live very nicely side by side with the comprehensive plan. So I'd just like you to consider funding that, and I would like to answer any questions that anyone may have if appropriate.
So you don't, you feel like it's gonna be able to be meshed in with comprehensive plan?
Yes, I do, Rob. Chairman, if you look at the, the old version and look at the areas of study, you know, the comprehensive plan, they've done upgrades to it, and I think it's good, and I strongly encourage everybody to participate in that process. But there are some areas that I think are important to the community that really don't get addressed in the depth or to the degree that this other study would.
And give me an example.
Well, we have areas, I'm gonna again, kind of turn to the duplication of the, of the downtown area. It was very detailed and it allowed us to, when the city was looking at, you know, replanting the trees and doing some other things, it gave us a plan that we could hold up and say, you know, this is what was proposed by the engineering company and this is what the community supported because like the comprehensive plan, there was opportunities for community input. So again, it's, it's more, it's more detailed. And now you may say, well, what's so important about having, you know, nice trees and plants downtown? Again, these things are retail and commercial support, in my opinion. Because if you look at, it's probably gonna be a while before we're, you know, the next one at county, and that's nothing, certainly nothing that any of us wants. So in order to support these businesses as well as to have some more businesses come in that people would like to have, I thought the way you could have it is, is to have tourism. And I think, again, having that very nice inviting downtown is a big part of that. So I hope I addressed that question for you.
Ms. Fay, if, if this was to get approved, how would you, how would you finance? Where would the check come from? What would be your recommendation?
Take it to Ron, I'm sure.
Take it out of the Chamber of Commerce, Jay?
If I'm not mistaken, it could be funded with our portion of the hotel rental tax.
We got enough in there to, to do that if that be the case?
I believe that we do.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I think I'm gonna have to elect officials. I think it's important to also realize that while the comprehensive plan is an overall umbrella for the way that all of the governing authorities are to work together towards the future of the community, this is more strategic and operational. This gives us boxes that the citizens can look at and say, and measure the accountability of what is government doing and what is, what is the community doing towards moving Pickens County forward. The whole issue and the reason we called it in the very beginning, a vision forward, is the fact that it truly is. You know, as you've seen over the last couple of years, and I've got the sheriff sitting behind me, you know, budgeting isn't an every 12-month process. Budgeting should be a 60 to 72-month process so that we don't have capital things that are coming up, that we're getting blindsided with immediate tax increases. So I think that to that end, a plan that you put together that involves not only the governing authority, but the business community, gives us an opportunity to truly walk side by side, hold them the same banner, so that people can understand what the vision is for the future of Pickens County, as well as what the accountability options are to help us get to that point. I, I know that's kind of a pie in the sky way to look at it, but I think that it's important to remember that this is about, this is about us checking off the boxes locally as opposed to the state's boxes needing to be checked off from a comprehensive plan.
And who would be, who would be carrying the flag for this proposal?
Well, quite frankly, I think that we all do. I think that, you know, we owe it to the 32,000 so odd citizens that the government, of their local government have the vision to carry them forward. Personally think that there is a core group of people, 10 or 12, that would, would really rally and, and work the plan itself, operationally, both with the county and the cities if they choose to participate, and the chamber. But I think that there's a wide variety of people that would need to be involved. Because the thing, you know, I've learned in my last 22 years in government is there's a lot of really good ideas out there, sometimes we just don't solicit them. And so I think that there'd be a large committee, probably funneling down to a very small committee, and then ultimately reporting to the board of commissioners. Because we're, no decisions are gonna get made that you guys can't necessarily live with and help us to implement, because you have that legislative ability to help with that.
Who is going, I guess, as a group, whoever this group's gonna be, who's gonna pick these committees?
Well, quite frankly, I think that that's up to both you and the chamber board. And I think that, you know, ultimately, there is an opportunity to involve folks that you already have in-house. I don't think you necessarily have to solicit and get 500 people. I think that there's an opportunity to probably pull together 20 to 40 people in the community for various parts of this. In our original discussions, we talked about different buckets. You may have people that are very interested in infrastructure and utilities, and you may have people that are interested in, you know, how the comprehensive plan meshes and how public safety meshes. And so you pull all those people together. Ultimately, what I think you need to do is, the board commissioners, is that you all need to set the tone and appoint a chair, whoever you think that that should be, somebody to carry out this effort. And then that let that person help and shepherd in soliciting from you and from the chamber, the organizational structure to be able to get these people together. You know, as we approach 2018, our budget year is already upon us, and I'm sure Fay's already thinking towards how, how are we gonna do next? And I think this gives us a good opportunity to use this as kind of a stepping stone to help with that operational strategic plan so that we're able to, again, have some accountability and some vision forward. And I think that it's definitely got to have the, the chamber and the business community with us.
Vision forward, I remember seeing it back in 93.
1993.
93.
Yeah.
And I think it was, it was done to the fact that most of them were involved in this political structure at that time, but there was, who was the chairman of that one?
I don't remember, but I know that Jim Looney was the integral part of it. I believe that Bob Payne was an integral part of it. And, you know, again, I think you had all the different elected officials from the city. The issue with a vision forward, and I think anybody that's read it, Jerry would even share this, you know, it's a great plan, it's really pretty, they did a fabulous job. When I sit back and look at what they wrote, that was the year I graduated high school, he was a visionary. he was visionary of the things that they wanted to accomplish. The problem was, like most plans, it got stuck on a shelf somewhere after a few things got checked off and nobody picked it back up. And again, I think that's the difference where we can make that difference today or you can make that difference, is that you provide some structure for accountability for that moving forward. I think that that is the key piece, is shepherding it so that if you spend this money, if you spend this money to write a plan, quite frankly, I'll take their $1,000 and drag a really pretty plan and put it on a shelf somewhere. I think the reason to do this is to bring in professionals to help us vision cast so that the community that we're leaving for your grandchildren and my children is a better place than it was when we found it. So that's my spiel. I can say, and I think Ms. Lender would do this, most county governments do a strategic plan and a lot of them don't involve the business community. I think this makes this a little unique. The school system has a strategic plan and everything is measured against what that strategic plan says from an operational accountability standpoint.
Well, wouldn't you recommend that all of these work together?
Absolutely. Absolutely. I think that, again, we would be remiss if we didn't bring in the business community because from an economic development standpoint, they are absolutely vital. But I think that they also really value our opinion as the government because ultimately, you have the legislative ability and executive ability to make significant changes to impact our future.
And Jerry, what was that favor number 11-5?
Yes, sir.
And I think that was actually the lowest one. The last one that I received was 17-2.
And I guess we just make payments to Fay. All right. So what is y'all's proposal?
Well, of course, it's near and dear to my heart, so I would like to, my recommendation would be that we go for all of it.
All right. Pardon? Motion by Becky, second by Jerry. Have a move and a second. Any further discussion? Other than I would like to see it kept within a 20 to 40-person entity.
I think the next step for us would be to get some governance structure back to you to give some input, potential reservation offer us and have you want to see that. We just need to be able to engage the consultant.
All right. Moving secondly, further discussion? None being all that favorable, nobody saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed, thank you. All right. All right. Get her going. Now that brings us down to item B. We have a request to revise school attendance ordinance, section 42. We have looked at, we have revised it. You have checked it out, I'm sure, I know you've read it. I need a move and a second to approve the revised edition of the school ordinance function. It starts at 42-3.4, school attendance required, but it keeps on going.
Second.
I have a move and a second to fix the county attendance protocol meeting, which was on that on March 29, 2017, and request the following changes to the Pickens County ordinances. If approved by the board of commissioners, a committee requests changes to the PCSD code of conduct and parent information package to reflect the changes in the county ordinance. I have a move and a second. Move was by Becky, second by Jerry, I believe that's correct. Or vice versa, I'm sorry, changed it around. All, any further discussion? None being all that favorable, nobody saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed, thank you. All right. All right, now we're going down to action items. We need to approve the minutes from the regular board meeting on April 20, 2017. Y'all got a copy of that through the computer? Y'all have any changes or amendments to that particular minutes for those board meetings? All right, need a move and a second to approve?
Second.
Moving secondly, further discussion? None being all that favorable, nobody saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed, thank you. Okay, under item two, work session on May 4, 2017. I need a move and a second to approve those minutes as written.
Second.
Move and a second for discussion? None being all that favorable, nobody saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed, thank you. And then it brings it down to item three, the call meeting that we had on May 4, on 2017. We had a call meeting that, right after that work session. Need a move and a second to approve those minutes.
Second.
Have a move and a second for the discussion? None being all that favorable, nobody saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed, thank you. All right. Brings it back down to item B, under rezon request. We have no rezon request as of this time. Is that correct? Okay. All right, then item C, resolution reappointing a member to the library board. Have we got a resolution reappointing back to the library? Okay. There it is. Whereas the term of Bill Miller on Pickens County Library Board trustee expires June 30, 2017, and whereas Mr. Miller is eligible and has indicated his willingness to serve another term, now therefore will be hereby resolved that Bill Johnson has asked to be put back on the library board. If that would be y'all's likeness, I'd like to have approval to accept Mr. Johnson as a library board member for the next term.
Second.
Have a move and a second, any further discussion? None being all that, pardon? That phone? That should be Miller. Okay. All right, for Mr. Miller, I'm sorry, whereby Mr. Miller is eligible and has indicated his willingness to serve, I need a move and a second to accept Mr. Miller to serve on this board. Have a move? I have a move and a second. Any further discussion? None being all that favorable, nobody saying aye? All right, now item number D, is a deed to transfer property on Cove Road from Pickens County to the City of Jasper. If y'all remember that, that partial of road that goes from approximately the pump house there on Cove Road in the curve up the top of hill, the City of Jasper would like to have that, whatever you can take over responsibility of that. So that'll bring them to sick limits from where it is all up around to the top of the ridge.
Is that above all of all this racist property?
Yes. Yeah, it doesn't get, you get, so I need a move and a second to go ahead and give me the authority to sign the quitclaim deed for that particular parcel. Have a move and a second. Any further discussion? None being all that favorable, nobody saying aye? And we did have Jason Bowen survey that out, which the city already owns property on both sides of the road on the, yeah, we got the, you know, printout, well, you just fake it like down the road too. How much acreage is this all over there? Pardon? How much acreage is that? I don't think there's even a, does it give an acreage count there, Phil? I don't think there's. Think it's not even a half an acre of road. From here. See, they've got to right here. And right here, right up here. And they own, they already own this right here. Yeah. No, they've given up from here to here. They've got this. But yeah, well, you can call it right there. Yes, they've caused all of this turning up, they go, but by state law, they got property on both sides of the road and roll on, I could, because it comes to those anyway. Let me see, let me ask Jerry. Jerry, this is what, I'm listening. Well, you can see it better, but your glasses work better. Well, you want my glasses? The, they've got both sides of the road right here right now. This is about 30 feet past the guard rail, the last guard rail on Cove. They own this, this is a well right here, which they own that property there. So they're just getting from here to here, even though we already didn't cause for the whole thing, it's just a road on. All right. That brings us down to item E, our online water bill payments, constellations. Phil, you want to speak to that or you want Michelle to do that?
We talked a little about this up the, the other day, but the water department has set up a contractual arrangement where they can do online payments to the service. We've been going back and forth with the contract and we've finally got it where we
So I guess what we're asking is get a, I'm sorry. Either you want to say on the shell?
No, that's, that's pretty.
She's having a lot of customers calling and like to play, pay their water bill online. And without this, we can't, we can't make it happen. This should clear a lot of this up. Now, what I'm needing is a move and a second to give me the authority to sign the contract.
True.
Have a move and a second. Any further discussion? None being all that favorable, nobody saying aye? None opposed, thank you. And then I would sign this right here. There you go. We've got another item that was on the, did the, Michelle, you want to speak on the proposed water rate increase that you're speaking of?
Yes. Yes. Our infrastructure, our water name is 20 years old. The west end section being the oldest section. And what we are trying to do is stay ahead of this infrastructure and leaks, breakages and things like that. You know, we did a repair on the Jerusalem Church Road where we had to repair 3,500 feet of water name. And so with this water rate increase, it's $1 per minimum per connection. And what that would enable us to do is to have funds available so that we can repair these. We're looking at, you know, possibly doing the whole entire section of Jerusalem Church Road, you know, with these funds as they come available. Another thing is our equipment, our large equipment, booster pumps. We have had to do repairs on two of our major booster pumps. One of those was about $13,000 where we had to rebuild the motor and the pump. And we've had to make repairs on another one. We have five booster pumps that support five tanks. And, you know, with these existing infrastructures and booster pumps, it's not something that SLOSS can cover for us. SLOSS only covers new service, new work.
So what she's, if I may clarify, what, they got 20, how many customers, 2,800 and change?
Yeah, we got about 2,842 customers existing.
So you're asking for this $1 to be put on every bill per month?
Per minimum. So we have, like our standard is a 3/4 inch meter. That minimum right now is $35 a month. It would increase to $36 a month.
And 2-inch meter would be the same thing? It would just increase a dollar also, correct?
Yes.
That's okay. Sees as rate per thousand above that point there the same as for the, yeah?
We've not had a rate increase since 2012. But like for a 2-inch meter, that minimum was $65, it would go up to $66. We have a 6-inch meter and the minimum is 110, that'd go up to $111 per 1,000 gallons.
Have a move and a second. Any further discussion? None being all that favorable, nobody saying aye? None opposed, thank you. Now, you made a statement per thousand, but still per meter, not per thousand, correct?
It is per meter, but it's the minimum per 1,000 gallons that our customer uses.
Okay, yeah, I understand. As long as it's a dollar, okay. I got the last one on the agenda. We've had a request come in, come in the day before yesterday, but I got the documentation in today. The University of Tennessee along with the Georgia Department of Resources is requesting permission to set up a, let's see, what do you call it, a hair snare up there on our, off of Church Yard Road where we got our 500,000 gallon tank to capture any, any bear hair, I reckon. Research unit will access the property maximum of 10 times, one time for scouting, one time for construction of a hair snare, one time for pre-luring, six times for weekly data collection, site maintenance and re-luring and one time for deconstruction. So they're going to take it down when they get done. Conclusion of the study would be on August 2017. It is for bear, American black bears in the area, in the southern Appalachians. I just need permission to go ahead and give them the authority to use the property for such.
Second.
Have a move and a second. Any further discussion? None being all that favorable, nobody saying aye? All right. Not this time, that opens it up to guests and comments. Does anyone have a question or a guest or a comment? Or we adjourned? Yes, Jim?
Okay. Thank you for moving forward on protecting future property owners from trashy-looking trash receptors. But I have a question for you, and I think it's an important question. And this is coming more towards the county attorney than anybody else. Once you put this in place and you require them to build the enclosure under the building laws, you have a building ordinances, right? What is to keep them from simply not using it in the future? In other words, if they choose not to use it at that point and start displaying trash outside of that thing, you don't have any police power enactment going on that says, hey, once you build this thing, you've got to use it. So my recommendation is, where I think we stumbled here, is this never got brought to a work session where you all got a chance to work back and forth with the professional staff to rework this thing. And I think it's fine the way it is, but I think this question needs to be answered. Once you put this in place and a business chooses to not use it, how are you going to enforce them using that thing that you forced them to build in the first place?
Well, they get, if an entity is trashing their property up, as this ordinance goes forward, we have a marshal that regulates littering. So maybe we can work through that part of the ordinance that we've got there.
I've found that these businesses are going to push it to the nth degree. Some will be cooperative under pressure. The Dollar General on Cove Road has made improvements in that area by, mainly by Ms. Denny getting involved with them. But, you know, I really think you need to improve that ordinance that helps Jim, county marshal, you know, enforce that such that when we build one of those things, they're actually required to use it and not display trash, not display refuse, meaning solid waste and recyclables on their property that needs to go in the enclosure that they built for. That would be my recommendation. Maybe the best way to do that is to take it to a work session and plan it out. The next time I'd like to make is about Judge Wingington's suggestion. I think that's the greatest thing, I really do. My strong recommendation to you guys is to get them to appoint a project management professional, a PMP, that can come in and design. The questions you're asking are what's called a project scope statement.
Correct.
Put your project scope statement in there, you break it down into some projects and you move forward with it. And then you don't let it go on the shelf. Make sure there's funding there to keep that PMP around or remind yourselves as to what's going on with that plan. I can't set that up more strongly. They need a professional project manager to come in and help create that project and then drive it forward.
And I'm assuming the money that was set aside for this is that, the purpose of that, creating that individual to run the survey?
You talk about do the process?
Yes.
Yes.
Because, you know, I mean, in the business world, if you come to an executive and ask for them to do something and you don't have a project scope statement and you don't have a work breakdown structure, they're going to look at you like you're coming from Mars, you know? Because the questions you were asking is what you're going to do with this money?
Right.
And that's a dead gum good question. Because you want whatever they produce to be useful and drive this community forward in a positive way. So I mean, I advise you guys, I insist that they have a PMP, develop a project scope statement and a work plan to get those things actually accomplished. And keep them on, keep them on the payroll, even if it's just part-time. Monitor what's going on and report it on a regular basis.
This one?
Authority for use of.
Do I?
Authority for use of.
Oh. You have.
You haven't told me to get that. We have got, we have got some bid practice coming in tomorrow at one o'clock. Can I go ahead and go into a minute to go ahead and give me the authority to sign those? It's for the, it's for the L D, the road making. No. That's true. Might have to do a special call meeting and all that. We got, we got to wait till the bids come in on that part.
Real quick, on that same topic, how many bids they have to come in, do you know?
So far, it's four. Four so far.
That's good, though. Yeah, that's real good.
He told us last year, he didn't give anybody a bid on that. You know, Bart, well, Bart said, I thought Bart, didn't you, didn't you say, depending on what bid we got, you'd give them a three-point-one million dollar bonus if you got the project done quicker?
Yeah, I can get it done yesterday.
Anybody got any other questions or statements? Jerry, again, congratulations. Thank you. You have been an asset to the community always. We do appreciate it very much. Ladies and gentlemen, y'all have a good weekend. This is the media's time for it, thank you.